Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the North Grove School Committee Open Meeting of Wednesday, June 7th, 2017. It has just passed the hour of 7:00 p.m. And the first item on our agenda is to enter into executive session. This will not be too long. Continuing that motion.
My motion that we move into executive session to discuss strategy was in touch with the Department of Education due to the chair's determination that discussion regarding these matters in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the committee with the intent to return to open session.
Thank you. Give me a second. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, is it a roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Here we go. Great, so we're back into open session. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. And we will continue on with the agenda, and we'll start with action on minutes. We have a slew. I don't know if that's a real word.
A slew.
A slew. We have a slew. But hopefully, we can do them all in one motion. Unless there is a dissenting opinion from a fellow school committee member, otherwise, I would be willing to entertain a motion on them all. Just needs to be read into record.
So are we doing special open in executive?
I'm doing all of them.
I have a person. I have moved that we accept the special open meeting minutes of April 25th, 2016, the special open meeting minutes of August 17th, 2016, the executive session minutes of August 17th, 2016. Are we gonna retain those?
No, we're releasing them all.
We're releasing them all, okay. Action on the special open meeting minutes of April 24th, 2017, action on the open meeting minutes of May 3rd, 2017, action on the executive session minutes of May 3rd, 2017, and action on retained executive session minutes and subcommittee minutes.
Thank you. Give me a second. Thank you. All right, so any discussion? And noted, there's not much to them, so there's not, I didn't see any changes that need to be made. It's a hearing, no further discussion. Take a vote. All in favor? Passes unanimously. They're all approved. Thank you, everyone.
Ma'am Chair, I'd just like to thank the committee this brings us current for the entire year for our minutes, subcommittee, and open an executive session.
Thanks. Thank you, and Pastor, thanks along to the members of your staff who assisted in preparing those. First item on the new business is the Malacan Middle School Improvement Plan and PTO. I saw a PTO. Oh, hey. I'm gonna assume, you don't mind going first, Beth?
Not at all.
Great, thank you.
I will speak loud because I'm not my speaker. I'm Beth Mitchell-Garthy. I am the current chair of the Malacan PTO, and this is my second year. As a matter of fact, this is my second. And last year, because my eighth grader is moving on to Algonquin, and we're at 11 days worth counting down now, so we'll wrap it up nicely in a nice bow for you. I want to first thank Michelle for the opportunity of being her parent representative in the PTO meetings. We've been working together for the two years, and it's been a great opportunity for me personally to see what goes on behind the scenes at school and to get a better understanding and appreciation for how school runs. And that said, I have to say, Malacan runs like a well-oil machine. I think all the schools do. It's kind of a testament to the whole community. But it makes my job as a parent representative all that much easier when I come in to have these conversations about what's going on at school and how can we support the school. So the PTO, as you know, our primary job is to raise funds so that the school can have little extra programs running at school that the regular school budget doesn't cover. It's been the same fundraiser for many years. It's successful. I mean, it brings in a lot of money. It's a magazine fundraiser, magazine drive. Everyone here in the room and at home has probably bought a subscription at some point from middle school. And every year, it gets much more challenging because today's environment is paperless. No one reads magazines. No one reads newspapers. They have it either on a tablet or they have time for it. So to augment that, we're continuing the program, but we thought, let's try something new. We have a challenge here. We've got to bring in the money. What are we gonna do? And there's always a conversation every year, probably every school, is the parent doesn't want to give money. Every little fundraiser that comes down the pike, would they write a check at the beginning of the school year? So we tried that as an experiment this year. We gave our parents options. Do they want to support the fundraisers through the traditional method, or they like to write a donation check? And what we found is, we brought in less money from the magazine drives, as expected, because every year, it's less and less, while we also brought in $3,000 more, from zero, of straight-up cash donations. So all told, we brought in about $15,000 at the beginning of the school year for the school. So that is something that we're gonna have to work on going forward with the new co-chairs about how to kind of sustain that income flow. And that said, we brought in the money. Now we have to figure out how to spend it on the school. Now, there are so many traditional programs that the school runs for each grade. Every year, it's the same one. The kids expect it when they get into seventh grade to have a Greek festival, that kind of thing. So our budget runs about $11,000. So of that $15,000 we brought in, $11,000 of it is already spoken for if we want to keep supporting the same quality extra enrichment programs that have been going on. We were able to do that this year. We were also able to offer teacher grants, like $200 to $400. You know, something will come up in the classroom, and a teacher will go, what a great idea. My kids could really benefit from this. How can I try it out? And they'll come to the PTO, and we were fortunate enough to be able to do that for them. We also had a student team come forward. The Destination Imagination Team from Malacan Middle School made it to the national finals down in Tennessee this past month, and we were able to help them with their hotel costs a little bit. So those are the kind of things that we like to do. But we, our biggest accomplishment, I think, this year was to bring back John Halligan. He is a national speaker. I don't know if anybody was able to come to the program this year. He has a presentation called Ryan's Story about his son, who committed suicide several years ago. He was bullied in school. So John has taken it upon himself to go to every school that he can get to in the country to present tools to the children during the school day. They have their own presentation. Tools, how to recognize bullying amongst your friends, how to address it in sort of socially appropriate ways so that the kids can kind of deal with it themselves and kind of weigh or delay some of the effects of what's going on in the classroom until it can be dealt with by the professional. In the evening, the parents also had a program, and this is where we went, and we learned about what the environment is like for the kids these days, what kind of things can we look out for, how can we put our little radar up to keep an eye on our children and their friends, to keep bullying and other kind of dangers out of our children's lives. Bottom line is, this program is incredibly successful. It's also incredibly expensive. So we were fortunate enough to bring it in this year. The PTO now has committed for every three years, we're just gonna save money out of that fundraising drive every year, like a third, so we can bring him back in another three years. That means every child that goes through the middle school, at some point, will be able to participate in this program and bring those experiences with them when they get to the high school. So that was our big accomplishment. And the other side of it, it's not just the fundraising, it's sort of the community sense that we have. Parents can tell you, every child goes, Mom, Dad, I don't want to see you in school. I want you to have nothing to do with my school. But psychologists will say, those children really want you in your school. They want you to be a part of their day, and how can parents do that in middle school when there's not a lot of opportunities for the parents to come into school? And they shouldn't. This is a time where the kids learn to be independent and do things on their own. The parents shouldn't be looking over their shoulders. So the PTO gives the parents an opportunity to come into the school in a way that works out with their schedules to kind of help out. Volunteering, as usual, is one way to do it. Making for teacher appreciation days is another way to do it. But we thought of another way, about two years ago, to open up our Facebook page. Not everyone's a Facebook user, but those who do use social media and do belong to Facebook can have now a private place to go for the school PTO to have conversations with other parents, ask questions, the simple things like what time does the concert start on Thursday, to this happened on the bus today, what should I do to address that? And if any questions come up, it is myself or the webmaster who go in and get that question, talk to Michelle directly, and we get the answer back to the parents. So it's become a forum, and a very successful one, I think, to have the parents feel like they've got a safe place that they can go to to ask questions and stay in constant contact with the school without deluding her with phone calls. So that's what I'd like to sort of wrap it up with, that we've had a really good, successful year, I think, building on what we started. And as I retire, I will hand over the reins to the next two to carry on the same way.
I just want to add that Beth has been invaluable to me as I started last year as principal, and I think that one of our big goals was about communication with parents in better ways, more timely ways, and Beth has been instrumental in really helping how we communicate with parents and how often and in what kinds of forms. So that has been a really, really important link that hopefully the next co-chairs will take on. Beth was a co-chair. For the last year and a half, she's been alone, but she still calls herself co-chair. So we think she's so great that there only needs to be one of her, so we're, but honestly, she's been just instrumental, and hopefully, the next co-chairs will be as well because it's just improved the way we're able to communicate with families so much, so.
Thank you very much. And thank you all for letting me come, and I wish you all a really great summer.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Thanks for all that you've done for this school and for everyone here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now that we're done with the PTO aspect, thank you. We can move on to the Better Middle School Improvement Plan. Thank you.
So while it's warming up a little bit, your orange-bound improvement plan, a couple pages in, there's a page that has the goals at a glance. As you go further into the document, they're spelled out a little bit more clearly with action steps, but the goals-at-a-glance page is nice because you can just take a quick look to get an overview of the goals in our new improvement plan. Before I continue, I do have one of my school council members here, so I do want to thank Linda Defutis, our school nurse and school council secretary, for coming. So thanks for being here, Linda. This is just a list of our school council for this year. It's a nice list with a community representative, a PTO member. Obviously, we always like to have parents and community reps on our school committee, so I have to thank this group of people for their hard work throughout the year. My school improvement plan is modeled after the district's Vision 2020, as they all are, so it will be organized around the four focus areas of the strategic plan: communication, curriculum, student support services, and technology. Under communication, we have four goals. One, the first one, is around parent communication, and Beth touched on it a little bit, but one of the big goals moving forward is to continue to evolve in the way we're able to communicate with parents. I started last spring sending out a Monday memo, every Monday at 7:00 a.m. for parents so they could count on it. I had always sent out a memo to staff, but thought it would be an easy way to get information out to parents and do it at a time that they could depend on. The feedback I got last year was very positive, so we've continued doing that. That is just an overview of the week for parents, activities that are happening after school, like sports, concerts, things like that, but also activities that are happening in school, and I will put in parentheses, an in-school event, something like that. But we know that children don't always share with their parents, so this helps keep parents informed. What came to our attention this year is a real need for real-time information. So I did start a Twitter feed. I had been reluctant to tweet, but decided that this was a real need, and that if I could use the Twitter feed only for real-time messages, that I would get people visiting it and knowing that they could go there and count on it. So the only thing that I use the Twitter feed for is to update people in real time. So we're having a Red Sox Spirit Day, something like that, that we decide during the day. Parents are not always made aware of that because their kids don't share it with them, so we put it out there for them. Jazz band is canceled tomorrow morning. We put that out in that way, and parents know that they can go here. So this came really as a result of Beth and the rest of the PTO sort of asking, is there a way to get out real-time information? We look at the website, we're looking here, and this, again, I don't put photos, I don't, it's just for real-time information. So moving forward, at this point, I'm the only one who updates it, but I want the office staff to be able to do it so that it doesn't have to come from me. So that's what we want to do next year, is to really improve our use of the Twitter feed, so parents do go there and know it's there. Additionally, we do have a calendar, obviously, on our webpage, and there is information everywhere, but I also send out the Monday, I mean, the monthly calendar that I send to staff now, I send in one of my Monday memos to parents. I just added that on. It's very easy for me to do. I think you can have information in a lot of places, and sometimes people miss it. So it's easy for me to tack it on, I just put that on as well. So our goal is to continue to improve our parent communication, continue to take feedback from parents in the community as we update and get better at how we do that. The second goal Beth started to talk about already, which was great, is to continue working closely with the PTO around the issue of communication, and Beth really has been instrumental in helping us. She has, there's a PTO page, there's the Facebook page, as Beth mentioned. One of the nice things about Facebook is people do get to kind of vent on there a little bit if they need to. They may not want to call and ask me a question, but they're not afraid to ask it on there. And if Beth or the webmaster doesn't know the answer, they shoot me an email, or they pick up the phone and call me. And, you know, if somebody, if one person has a question, more than likely, there are others. So I never, I'm always happy to get those calls because it helps me know that this is something I need to communicate about. So it's been wonderful, and we'll continue to do that. One of the things that the PTO is gonna work on with me is compiling a list of FAQs based on the questions that we got in this year, so we can publish them on the PTO page and on our website, because if people had them as questions last year, they most likely somebody might have them again. So again, working really closely with the PTO around improving communication. It's a vital link to the parent community, and I can't thank our PTO enough. It's been extremely helpful as I've taken on the role of principal, so. The third goal under this focus area is around our website and how we get information out. Obviously, this is one way to do that. The district's website has changed, our school website has changed, which is wonderful. As we get to understand the features and how to use them better, we're really excited about being able to streamline some of our communication. So one of the things that we have done for several years is post students' grades online. We use EasyGradePro online, and it gets shot out through EdLine. That's not really technical, but that's not my forte. But the bottom line is, parents can log in, get their students' grades, know what they're missing, know what they need to do, which is important. So we are looking through the use of our new website and some other things that really streamline in that process. We have basic guidelines around what we expect teachers to post for parents to see and kids to see. Basic guidelines are current average or current grade and missing assignments. But we are at a point now, we've been doing that for years, that we really want to beef that up. Some teachers post a lot more than others. We want to be more consistent with that so that parents know what to expect and kids know what to expect. So that's what we want to do moving forward. Currently, parents and students can view a calendar as well that shows all of their assignments. We are moving towards a Google Calendar. The same thing will happen. So again, we are looking at streamlining the communication that we are able to put out there and making it sort of a one-stop shopping, so it's a one- or two-click kind of a way to do that. So that's our goal for number three. The fourth one is around inviting parents in more. This is a big goal, has been a big goal of mine, and we certainly have a lot of work to continue doing. Beth is right around thinking that, you know, middle schoolers, they don't want their parents in school. It's not really true. It's a myth. They act like they don't want you there, but they do. So we are working at getting parents to come into the school more because I think it's really important to showcase what our students are doing. They're doing some wonderful things, so we want parents in our school. Again, it's a myth that kids don't want you there, teachers don't, we do want you there. So we have been, over the years, we have invited parents in for the sixth-grade CO2 car races at the end of the year. We continue doing that. We have invited them in for Shakespeare plays. We have invited parents in for some, you know, to do field trips, things like that. But this year, we added inviting parents in to see the eighth graders launch their bottle rockets, so that was fun. We also invited parents in to help us with our annual sixth-grade Greek festival. And we want to get more parents in next year, and the year after, we're gonna do even more of it. So that's a really important goal, to get parents in and seeing what their kids are doing. Under the strategic focus area of curriculum, we had four goals as well. The first goal is around our curriculum mapping. We have been creating curriculum maps since I've been here, at least, which is 20 years. But most recently, we have been using the district tool of Atlas to map our curriculum. We are very excited about sharing information from these maps with people who want to see it outside of the school, so we're really excited about being able to do that because we're proud of the work that we're doing. But as part of what we need to do moving forward is, we need to keep these documents alive, and we need to keep them moving with what we're doing and keep them, and make sure we are using them. So one of our goals is to provide at least three times per year, very structured times, that teachers will be able to get in there and make sure they're as current and as accurate as they can be. Hopefully, they'll do more. That's our basic goal. The second goal is around creating and administering more computer-based assessments. This year, as everyone else did, our students took their MCAS 2.0 exams on Chromebooks, and it went very well. But we recognize a need to be doing this more frequently throughout the school year. We are doing some of it. There's a need to do a lot more of it, and when we get the data, analyzing the data to inform our instruction. So teachers are using Google Forms and some other tools to create assessments that can be, that can be scored very quickly, and data can be generated, and we're working on doing more of that. So that's really important for us moving forward. The third goal under this strategic focus area is around creating a new master schedule. I had high hopes that we could do it this year, and we did a lot of work with it this year, but it's a longer process. So this year, what we were able to do, several of us attended a training, a workshop at the MSSAA, and it was wonderful. We got a lot of information. Our academic council is really kind of leading this charge. We surveyed parents at the beginning of the year. We surveyed teachers, and when we culled through all the data, what we found was what some people liked, other people didn't, what some people wanted to change, other people didn't. So we have a lot of work to do. We've done some research. We've been in contact with other middle schools, but we want to, maybe the current schedule we have is the best it can be, but we want to maximize the teachers and the skills that we have in the building. One of the things that we'd like to do is add some more time for math. We know there's a need for that, so we're working on that. It's a work in progress. Our hope is that next year, we have mapped out a calendar for the things that we want to do, to get to a place where we're able to present a couple of schedules to the staff and we're able to choose one moving forward. Our fourth goal under this focus area of curriculum is around professional development. One of the things that I started doing last, or actually, probably the year before, was to give, release teachers for half a day just to work together, which doesn't seem like a big deal, but it's a huge deal if you have three hours during the school day to get together and get some work done. So our science teachers, for example, the six of them, have at least two half-days where they were able to get together and align to the next-generation science standards, and they got so much work done, all six of them worked together. They were able to work through sixth grade as a unit, seventh grade as a unit, eighth grade. So they have all been invested in the entire process, which is amazing. This year, they've been able to meet and review how things are going, talk about learning activities, how long it's taken to do some of the standards that have moved, for example, from eighth down to sixth grade, those sorts of things. So that time has been invaluable. That group has worked extremely well using that time. We are moving forward with doing more of this around some of our other curriculum initiatives. One example is TLA, Teaching and Learning Alliance. We had somebody come in during a district PD day to work with our ELA teachers, and then I was able to give some of our ELA teachers a half a day to really kind of look at planning thematic units, which is a shift for us. So rather than teaching, for example, poetry as a unit, you teach a theme like conflict or civil war or something like that, and you have a poem, and you have a short story, and maybe you have a novel. So our teachers are excited about that, and they were able to have some time during their day to actually work together, which is invaluable to them. We are going to do more of that moving forward because it's important. Similarly, one of our social studies teachers has been going to some trainings on Primary Source, and she is working with her colleagues around planning thematic units in history and social studies as well, which is wonderful. So they are gonna need some time next year to be able to really talk about that and see what that looks like. So any of our curriculum initiatives that are in process or that we want to move forward with, I think the best thing that I can do is give the teachers some time to work. So half-days, three-hours, usually, they meet around lunchtime. I might have to cover one or two classes and a study, and they can get a lot of work done. So it's really important to keep our initiatives alive and moving. Under the strategic focus area of student support services, we have actually five goals. The first one is around Jess Minahan. Jess Minahan is a BCBA, a Board Certified Behavior Analyst. She wrote the book, The Behavior Code. She's done some other work as well, but she works nationally and does some international work around cracking the behavior code, basically. And we got very excited. I bought, we bought books for everybody on our leadership team, The Behavior Code, and we've been reading through chapters together, talking about implications, implementing and trying some strategies. Jess Minahan was at the MSSAA, and about eight of us went, and she was phenomenal. We learned so much. When we came back, teachers actually presented, and that's what these two are, PowerPoints, they actually shared with the entire faculty and got all of them excited. From there, we had a couple of other people go to another training, which was wonderful. So we've got some momentum with this initiative, and we're really excited next year about a systemic, systematic way of rolling out what we're gonna do. So we try to look at behavior through this lens and think about different strategies and ways that we can help students. So this is really exciting for us. The second goal here is around our English language learners. There is always room for growth around how we support this population of students. One of the things that comes up often is our students come to us from all different places, all different backgrounds, and there are the students who have very limited English, and there are the students who have very limited education, there are the students who have very limited both, and we really have to collaborate to customize what we're able to do with the kids. So moving forward, our goal is around classroom teachers collaborating with ELL teachers more, around looking at data as we do. We look at the WEDA scores and other authentic classroom data to really customize our programs for our ELLs to help all of them achieve growth. The third goal under this category is around our STEPS program. I've talked about this before. STEPS is Student Tiered Educational Program for Success. This is our therapeutic program. This is the program that is being supported by the grant that we received from Metro West. So we've been working with BRIGHT, Bridge for Resilient Youth in Transition. We've been consulting with them to try to, we have treatment plans for students in this program, but we've tried different treatment plans. Our move for, our moving forward, our goals are around streamlining the process. We've learned a lot this year, and we have a lot of work to do, so we're really excited about the program. We're excited about the personnel. We're excited to see our kids grow. There are a couple of success stories this year in this program with students who last year were really not doing well, and, you know, we didn't know what to do, and they have had very successful years. So we're really happy they are going to classes. They come to a therapeutic area for support and for breaks, but they are going to classes. They are accessing the curriculum. So we're very proud of that. We have a lot of work to do and a lot of goals connected to it, but we're very excited. The other goal is around STRIDES. That is our less intense therapeutic program. So our behavior specialist runs that. Similarly, that program works nicely with STEPS, and we are working at streamlining some of our documentation, some of the way we collect data. So the focus is always on learning in these programs, and they're academics, you come back to that to ground them, but every student needs a little something different, so we have some options for kids, and we're excited about moving forward with both of those programs. those programs. Our last goal under this focus area is around our language-based program. We have had a language-intensive program for as long as I've been here, which is 20 years. It has evolved into a language-based program that provides students with language-based disabilities or specific learning disabilities, special instruction, small group direct instruction in the areas of English and reading. For the rest of students' day, they are with the rest of their classmates, but they get small group instruction for those two areas. This year, we added in a component of a co-teaching model in eighth grade social studies. There's a lot of language in social studies. It was very successful. So moving forward, we are looking to add in language-based co-teaching and/or small group for seventh grade for students in this program. It's a need. They need something a little bit different, so we're looking to beef that up. So we're really excited about that moving forward as well. The last focus area is around technology. So we have five goals here. The first one is around really implementing a strong integration, a tech integration program. This was our first year that our tech integration specialist did not also teach 10 or 20 classes over the course of the week. So it was wonderful to have the support for teachers. We are looking to streamline that moving forward. That person acts as a coach for teachers, acts as a co-teacher, is really in there, in classrooms with teachers, helping them with technology. So we are looking forward to continuing that growth into next year. The second goal is around our one-to-one initiative. Next year, we will be one-to-one for student-to-device ratio. Obviously, our NEF was extremely helpful in getting us Chromebooks. So we know that there's a lot of work to do when you roll out a one-to-one initiative. Obviously, there are logistics around how do students get their equipment? Where do they put it when they go to lunch? All of that to the training that we need to do with students before we put these devices in their hand around digital responsibility, around a lot of different pieces. So we have that piece. We also have a lot of training we have to do with our teachers. So we understand that. It's going to be a slow and a very thoughtful rollout, but we're really excited about it. And then the third goal here is about our in-house tech committee. We, our goal is actually to revive this committee. We have teachers who I think needed a break from it, which we all understand, but we have a lot of teachers who are excited and who are on the cutting edge of trying technology. So we are going to revive our tech committee, which will be meeting once a month. They're teachers, it's voluntary. Once a month, we also have a Monday tech meeting where they will share apps, they will share best practices, they will help, they will run workshops. And this is a great way to empower teachers, to have them help. Teachers respond well to teachers. And when somebody stands up and says, "If I can do it, you can do it," teachers will jump in. So we are excited about this and helping teachers take risks and support them as we move into our one-to-one initiative. And then our fourth goal. Our fourth goal is around our STEM initiative. We were fortunate enough to have a STEM lab to start this year in our engineering suite. So we have laptops and we have two 3D printers, which is really exciting. So what we have done this year is been able to take some of our engineering challenges and projects that we've done over the years, for example, the sixth-grade CO2 car, and we've been able to add another component. So students were able to design their cars on the computers. They were able to make edits and to test some different things. And then they were able to print a prototype on the 3D printer, which was awesome. They were so excited. They had a small model of what they were going to do. They could look and say, "I don't think that's the way it should be." So that was really exciting because it's a project we've done for years, but we were able to modernize it, bring it to life for the kids, and they were excited. Similarly, the seventh-grade bridge design project that we have done for years, students were able to design those on the computer, they were able to test those on the computer, and then they were able to make them. So we were able to take some of our projects and really bring them, make them more current, and the kids were excited. We added a couple of different projects, too. There was a catapult project and a couple of other projects that we were able to add. We did do some Lego robotics with some of the classes and we had a robotics club. So there's a lot of exciting work. Moving forward, what we are hoping to do is to pollinate and get everybody excited about STEM. We have a lot of STEM kinds of activities going on in science and math classrooms and we want to bring everybody together and really move forward together. So last year, we had a few teachers go through PTC and get a STEM certification. This year, we had two teachers do that. And we have other teachers who are excited about getting involved in STEM workshops and bringing things back together here. So we're excited about that. And then finally, we want to hold at least one parent information night, parent tech night, next year to really showcase what we're doing with technology. It's pretty amazing to see what the kids are doing. It's pretty amazing to see all the opportunities that are there around technology and we think it's important to open up to the public. We've done it in the past. We haven't done it in a few years, but we really think this is crucial in terms of keeping everybody in the loop. And then the last slide, these are just some photos from our photography club. The project was a day in the life of a Melikan middle schooler. So just wanted to share those.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Does anybody have any questions?
I just want to compliment you on the Monday memo and your initiatives for better communication and more opportunities for parents. You're right. A lot of times, the students will say, "I don't want to see you at school," but they don't, they don't really mean it. Perfect example is just this week when I said to my daughter, "I'm going to Melikan to pick up my packet, maybe I'll see you." "Oh, no, I don't want you in the school. I don't want to see you." I think she was actually looking for me and when she spotted me, she was so excited, jumping up and down and waving at me and just truly happy to see me. And so they do, they do get happy and excited and I'm glad that you're, like the coffee shop, the coffee house night that was recently and there are opportunities. And I'm so glad that you have two different times in the year for parent-teacher conferences and to bring back the tech night would be a great thing as well. It's nice that you have those opportunities and that you are doing the Monday memo for parents. So thank you for those initiatives.
What's your Twitter handle?
I don't even know because I just click on and add. So I can email it to you.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that.
Or you can just go on the website and see it.
I'll find it.
I'm really a new tweeter.
Okay, I'll find it.
I do have to ask about, you know, one of the challenges that you have and that you mentioned was with the new scheduling. And that's something, a lot of parents approach me and ask me about the scheduling. There seems to be questions from parents about why can't there be something for students that are not in course or band, why can't they have another option besides a study? Is there any chance that perhaps even with a one-to-one initiative, would you have a device that maybe a student could do an online class? Or are there going to be any options in the future for students that aren't really excited about, don't really want to take a study, but they're not into band or course?
I'm really glad you asked that question, actually. That is something that we are looking at for next year. So even before we think about a big schedule, we are making a few changes this year based on staffing and we're excited about it. But we agree and we are trying to be creative around what that might look like and whether there are options or, as you're talking about, something for the kids to do if they have a device. So glad you asked the question and it certainly comes up often and we are working at it.
Great, thanks. My one last concern that parents have is with the shift in the technology and I, it should be embedded in every class. I understand the philosophy that it shouldn't be limited to just one class, something that should be embedded in all of the classes because that's how the world is going. That's what it is today. However, what about taking typing? Is that, is there going to be an option for students to be able to take? Because I think that years ago, that was part of the sixth-grade half-a-year option that they got to take in that technology class that was there. Is there any option or choice for students here to do a typing class?
At this point, there isn't, but one thing that we did offer this year was a coding class during a study and we had a pretty good number of kids who participated in that. So I think we do see the need to offer some different opportunities around technology. It's interesting because some parents that I talk to say, "I don't care if he knows how to type or not, he's pretty fast with his thumbs on his phone, I'm fine with it." So I, but I do think there is an opportunity there and I certainly think that we are open to options around technology. And again, as I said, we had some coding options this year, which we're excited about and hoping to continue. And I think your point about typing is a good one. So thank you.
One quick thing is too, I have to compliment you on Brain Break. You didn't mention it in the plan. You should have because I think that, that, you know, it's obvious you brought that on board and I know, I've heard positive responses from so many, not just the students. Of course, the students thrilled and they love it, but all around, I think it's just such a wonderful idea and it's fantastic. And for anyone in the audience who's not familiar with what the Brain Break is, it's don't mention it to the middle schoolers because they don't want it to be called this, but essentially, it's a recess.
So thank you. We did institute that last year on a trial basis. We offer the kids the option of going outside if it's nice for the last few minutes of lunch, or they can stay in the cafeteria if they prefer. But we recognize that it's social, emotional kind of a support for kids. Kids need to move a little bit and phys ed twice a week is great, but we need to give them the opportunities to move. So we have found that kids are more ready to learn when they get that break. So thank you.
Great, thanks. To my fellow committee members, any more questions, comments, discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carr. Thank you so much. All right. I hope you didn't have anything to add.
Only to applaud the great work at Melikan. I think the fact that they're always trying to maintain existing programs and enrich them, but still always mindful of new programs and initiatives that are student-centered, some of the programs that she mentioned around the language-based program, expanding that and enriching that, the therapeutic program. The STEPS program that we know is grant-funded, that was an initiative of the Melikan staff, that very large grant that provided some sort of capital to begin that program. And then, you know, the work around STEM and the online assessment for MCAS 2.0 was quite a significant endeavor and they came through quite well. And also, again, as with all the PTOs, to thank them for their effort. The work that they do really does provide support for enrichment activities, but also supports the budget through curriculum. So thank you very much. And Michelle.
We shall move on. And in your packet, you should have received a preliminary sheet for 2017, 2018. Oh, these are current, I'm sorry.
Right. These are just the listings of the subcommittees for consideration for next year. And to whatever extent we want to engage in conversation now about 17 and 18, I know sometimes they, the committee members will email the chair and, you know, share their one or two areas of interest. Our intent, again, this year will be to try to schedule as much as possible these subcommittee meetings so that everyone's calendars are arranged and all the dates are noted before the year begins. I think this year, we're really looking to address the schedules of our school committee members as well. Things change. People change jobs, they travel different distances, they might stay home, go to work, work at home. So every year, there's a change and we certainly want to try to accommodate the committee members so that we can have quorums at these meetings. Last year, we started meeting over the summer to get a jumpstart on the new school year, particularly around policy and so forth. I would really like to suggest that we explore that this summer. It's very difficult, once the year begins, to have very rich and consistent conversations about some of the policies that we need to develop. So thinking about maybe having, you know, three or four hours on a summer day where we go through as many policies as we possibly can, send them off to legal counsel so that during the year, we're leading, meeting less often, but actually covering more, more ground. So, you know, just some suggestions on how we might want to work differently to get more work done and be a little bit more efficient with the ability to have quorums.
Well, that being said, then we might want to decide tonight to formulate the Policy Development Subcommittee.
I'm good with policy.
You okay with policy?
I have a policy.
You're okay?
You have a policy? All right.
We can work that out.
Fantastic. All in agreement, then.
Actually, it is.
That way, if policy would like to meet during, you know, before we meet again in September as an entire committee, that way we will have that in place. So that will be taken care of. In regards to liaison assignments, is anyone, I'm certainly, we can, we're, I think we'll plan to have this on the agenda again in September. And feel free to reach out to me directly. Should you have a, you know, suggestion or request for this particular assignment? Or it's on the agenda tonight, so if you have something you'd like to request tonight, this evening?
The only, the only one that I'm looking at, and again, because of my travel schedule, would be payroll warrants. So just to make sure that there's someone around to be able to sign. So anyone that, you can. And then we just, if we have a proxy, if someone's a backup. Sue can be the primary.
You can, if we can make Sue primary, you can make me backup.
Thank you.
You know, I don't travel much.
My comment I had is there a liaison? Liaison to the Northborough 250th Committee, is that one that should go away since that's overdone? Or do we still need that position on the list?
I agree with you.
I think we can eliminate that.
I think so, too. I don't think we need to vote, we just have consensus. Eliminate that item from the 2017, 2018 assignment list.
And the Sole Feasibility Study Group has moved to almost signed documents for Phase One to launch within the next two weeks or so.
Yeah, I almost mentioned that.
So I think we're going to be keeping that, we'll probably keeping that up as an item for discussion at this.
Keep it for now.
Until it actually becomes a thing.
Yeah.
Be a thing soon. The sun was out today, so that's a good sign, right? And I know the Full Day K group will be meeting, the study group will be meeting this summer. We had a brief meeting and I do believe they will be coming with a suggestion to school committee or at least a presentation in October. And again, very much in the exploration, but has continued to meet for the last year. So the plan is to meet in August to work on a presentation. I know Sue was on that throughout this year.
Susan, are you okay with staying on that, yes liaison?
Yes. Those are the most likely to meet.
So we'll revisit this issue again in September.
And I do, I do think also the NSPAC will be meeting this summer. We're trying to, I think you were at one of the meetings where we had a conversation about trying to be proactive with our joint and collaborative speaker series for next year and also trying to come up with a lot of dates in common and get greater clarification on who's meeting when for what kind of thing. Because there seems to be a lot of meetings and want to try to synthesize all that and collaborate on more meetings together as opposed to just more meetings. And we know that we had a evening meeting in May that was really well-attended. So the goal is to have more night meetings so more parents can attend. So we might be meeting once this summer to go over some of that.
Keith, will you, would you be willing to continue to be the liaison for them and PTO?
I do have some challenges with midday because I work about an hour from Northborough. So early, early in the day work out better for me, but that aside, yes. It's an interest of mine to continue.
Great, thank you so much. I think it's just helpful for, at least for them to know who, who to funnel questions to or who is their liaison. I mean, certainly, they should go through you, but if they need to have something brought forward before the committee or they have questions for the school committee, certainly... certainly you're, you can be their liaison.
So our goal will be to schedule those meetings as soon as we can. And so a doodle poll is in your near future.
Doodle away.
Doodle away.
Okay. Great. All right, thank you. Any more discussion on the subcommittees? No? Great, then we'll move to school committee meeting, time and locations.
General discussion. Madam Chair, this has come up with, you know, Lincoln Street coming online. Whether we wanted to meet always here at Malacan and continue, just for discussion purposes. We're certainly overjoyed with the hospitality.
Thank you.
Screens changed, it's a new setting, so it took a little while, but I think we're good with that now. And Malacan is always a central place, but again, we haven't visited this discussion since, you know, Lincoln, the renovations were over and it is now, you know, a wonderful place to meet. And then also, some conversation had come up about whether or not the committee would want to entertain moving the start time of the meeting from seven to six thirty. And so just general conversation from the committee, if they would like to have one.
It's a challenge, I know that's a challenge for me.
Six thirty is?
Yes. Six thirty is a challenge for me.
It'll probably be for me as well, as far as after-school activities getting scheduled. And halfway through that process right now, and I, it, it may not be able to work. Since the time is always known, and consistently, when I make my schedules, I've been using this as my consistent time, so.
Yeah, it, it, it really works for me.
Okay.
I would lean towards seven. I could probably do either, but.
I can, same. I could do either, but seven works for me too.
I, I would prefer to keep it at the seven, but should there be, you know, extending items, saying extended agenda? Or to have an item on the, yeah.
If we had a very full meeting, we could certainly, on an ad hoc basis, just say, okay, this one's going to be at six thirty. We can use that the next one. Yeah.
Yeah. But generally, I would, I would agree to stay with the seven.
Certainty to the families and.
Yes.
It's been that way for so long.
I know.
I think people that tune in will be all thrown off as well.
And, yeah.
All the viewers.
All the viewers.
What do you hear, 2.6% get their information from the school committee? The first survey said, right, 2.6.
And I, I, well, I mean, I'm very grateful, I appreciate the, the offer from Lincoln Street School to hold meetings there. I don't think we can accommodate that with the cable. I think that the only, isn't, am I correct, the cable?
Cable has to be here.
Cable has to be here.
There you go, Michelle.
I think the law, in order to broadcast live.
I love having you here. It's easy for me.
It is tradition and we ever have an overflow crowd, but, you know, we certainly can accommodate anyone in the community that wants to see it live.
The live fee, yeah. I, I remember when we made that.
That's right.
The agreement with the cable companies. We can do a live fee from.
Okay.
That works.
Great, thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, so the next item on the agenda reflects what was, we just had an executive session and we're, we discussed an executive session, we are now ready to present an open session, discussion, hopefully motions in regards to the agreements with the Northborough School Custodians and the Northborough Teachers Association, ESP Unit C, though I think that name might be changing. Do we need to change on the motion?
It's the Northborough Teachers Association, Unit C, and the Northborough School Committee.
Okay.
And that is exactly what this item is. It is a request that the school committee vote to ratify the Northborough Teachers Association, Unit C, which is basically our administrative assistants, our cafeteria workers, our aides, our administrative assistants, and all of those very, very important support people. As we know, three years ago, we merged very separate contracts into one. And this is, again, sort of a refining of that merger of three contracts that happened three years ago. We were ready to move forward with this language and this ratification probably two months ago. However, we knew that there were going to be plan designs on insurance, that were going to be an integral part of the conversation with negotiations. And so rather than move this forward, we waited until the plan design discussions were finished and complete and continued the discussions. And now we are ready. I'm, I'm very pleased to report that, again, the process was incredible, a lot of teamwork by Central Office, but also a lot of collaboration with the association and their representatives. And it was just an amazing experience to really just sit back and have conversations about how we do what we do every day. The resulting contract before you for ratification represents a 222 on COLA, cost of living allowance, with minor language changes. A lot of it was cleaning up again from that merger and very slight, slight increases in some of the things like substituting when they substitute or, or some of the services that any ESP provides in support of the children's needs in the course of the day. So really successful and a great process. And as we know, the teacher's contract was ratified January, I think, January. So we can take them separately if you wish, but we're seeking a ratification for both. Our custodians in Northborough are represented by Public Employees Local Union Number 1116 of the Laborers International Union of North America, AFL-CIO. They are not part of MTA or the other retirement associations. And in front of you, you also have a COLA 222. The contract is good for the next three years, although we probably will be opening it for plan design changes for insurance each and every year, as that seems to be a, a moving target for everyone in the public sector and the private sector. Again, minor language changes and minor increases in longevity and clothing allowance in this great group to negotiate with and collaborate with. Can be a little intimidating when you see Laborers International of North America, but the group was, again, proud to be here as part of the Northborough Public Schools. And that came through, quite clearly through all of the discussions. So I would seek to ratify both agreements with a vote by the school committee this evening.
And I, I would welcome, I see no problem with one motion for both agreements.
I do want to say Peter Rolson is in the audience. I'll be talking with him again, so I definitely want to mention that Peter Rolson is in the audience. President of both associations and he was, he along with other representatives from both associations were at the table. I don't know, Peter, what did we meet, five or six times probably? Probably felt more like that, but it was about five or six throughout the process. So thank you and thank all of the association members.
Thank you. All right, now I'm ready, we're ready for motion. You already had practice.
So I move that the Northborough School Committee ratify the memorandum of agreement between the Northborough Teachers Association, Unit C, and the Northborough School Committee, as well as the memorandum of understanding between the committee and the Northborough School Custodians on behalf of Public Employees Local Union 1116 of the Laborers International Union of North America, AFL-CIO.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion on the table?
Thank you.
Abstaining? And opposed? None. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, glad that's done. And no, no old business at this time?
No old business.
Superintendent's report to the committee?
May 31st. I have to believe May 31st. Expenditure report. Again, we have been discussing the watchful eyes over the budget for some time. At this point, we are still in the black, on the bottom line. We have much to do in the month of June as we bring this budget to a close. And we will be doing that in three weeks. And final budget again will be presented, as always, at the first school committee meeting of the year.
Does you want to add anything, Cheryl?
Okay. Okay. I welcome a motion to approve until.
I move that we approve the general fund expenditure report as of May 31st, 2017.
Second. And second by Susan. Thank you. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor? Next item on the agenda, enrollments.
Enrollment's in your packet. Worth some discussion on a couple, a couple, a couple of points. We have been, throughout this process, and because of the new class size policy, mostly affecting how we welcome in and assign classes and grades and in neighborhood schools for students who are registering within the district. Last year, we mentioned that it was the first year that we had taken the registration on over the summer months at Central Office and really the first time that we holistically had an opportunity to see firsthand the movement that takes place in the summer months. And so last year, we had 56 students, only K through five. And Michelle, how many did you have at Malacan?
A lot.
A lot. Something like 60, I think you said, or?
No, 30.
30? Okay, half of that. And we're going to do that again this year and it's already started at, at the Central Office. So what we have is, believe it or not, from February, 25 students on waitlist, waiting to be assigned to a school. And so we've been very diligent about that process for some year. I think it's sibling year. We have an unbelievable number of twins, seemingly all within the Lincoln Street District. And the policy provides a statement that we will not, unless agreed upon by the parents, split siblings in a school. So we have ongoing conversations. We also have a half-day kindergarten model that we supported last year because we had significant numbers of students who were interested in the half-day K option this year. While this number in front of you represents nine, I think that number has gone down just from yesterday to today. Right, Jen? I think a couple of them chose a full-day K option. So we collectively, as an administrative team, met just this week. We're meeting on these enrollments weekly. And instead of calling them in on a monthly basis, we've been following them almost daily. What we see right now is what we saw last year. Parents are very much interested in enrolling them and getting them settled. They're not as quick to unenroll. So what we're seeing is an influx of students who are enrolling and haven't yet received the documentation that they're unenrolling. And so why do I think that that is a, a real scenario? Last year, the evidence that we had for the one year showed us that with those, with those 56 students that we registered or saw a change of, our ending numbers and our starting numbers were not 56 up. So that a lot of students unenroll over the summer months as well. So it was an in and out of, of 56 students. And we are not seeing that un enrollment factor yet, because parents are very anxious to get located, you know, get situated in the district. So because of what I'm observing with some of the sections, we've calculated how many seats are available in our districts at each, each grade level at this point, or in our district at each total grade span. So having said that, what does that mean? How many available seats do we have in grade one? How many available seats in grade two? How many available seats in grade three? And so on. Based on cap, which is, again, I'm going to really emphasize this, it is a recommended cap. When you have a sibling situation, we're taking both of them in in a school, we're not splitting them up. And so when that happens, we have conversations with the principals. And I do want to say quite emphatically that we have five people who are definitely very vocal and are very much champions of their school. But in the end, we're a K-5 system and that's how we look at our numbers. So we're meeting a lot. The good news, I think, is that we've decided, or we've looked at the numbers and we're going to add a first grade teacher at Peaslee. That is not going to mean that the budget's going to increase. It means we're going to, this early in the budget cycle for FY18, find the money. So where do you find the money? That's why we're looking for it. Things like really good hires over the summer. We sometimes can capture savings because the staff member that left, left at a higher wage than the staff member that's coming in. And that's very helpful. And so Cheryl and I are having ongoing conversations about where are we going to find this? But clearly, without that person, we would be more than just one or two over cap. And it's too early in the enrollment process not to suggest that. That would mean that we would have classes of 17 in grade one and a third teacher at grade one at Peaslee. What that also allows us to do is look at our overall available seats in grade one. So we're very mindful of that. The other thing that hasn't happened in these numbers is they do not reflect any shifts because we haven't yet identified what grade and what students might be enrolling in our new language-based program and also our therapeutic program. So what we know is caps at certain grades and that those numbers may go down if there are shifts in placements of students. Again, I'm going to say what is a not popular statement, but it's fact. It's too early to say what the exact numbers are going to be. When we're seeing 25 students move in, in two and a half months, with programs that are starting to get up and running and placements not yet defined in those programs, with kindergarten not yet known. And what we've discussed was waiting until August 4th to assess what the half-day K numbers are. And without at least 12 students, we're, we, we just cannot afford to run that half-day program. And in which case, that money, those funds allocated for that teacher would be used to offset any increases in staffing. So that's where we are today. Based on how we're tracking these numbers, it'll probably be different next week. And that's what we have when we have neighborhood schools. I will say again, that if we did not take that movement with the policy, we would be having a whole lot of very difficult conversations in August. Cheryl and I have gone back and forth about the buses. And so, you know, we have a bus company, their job is to get the routes right for us. And we know that with assignments for placements of students who are waitlisted, we've just gone through and, and tried to move this along so we can start having conversations with parents who are already waitlisted. What that means is we're going, you are waitlisted for your neighborhood school, but we will assign you to a school, if that neighborhood school is full. The waitlist is helpful if we have five students leave Lincoln Street in a class. Or overall, we then would go to the waitlist. It's just what happens when you're a school choice district. So we're applying the same methodology that districts who are actually school choice use. And I feel, I feel very confident that we're watching these numbers very closely and we're maximizing every opportunity that we can. So the half-day K, we are having conversations with the half-day parents. In some cases, half-day kindergarten parents. In some cases, I just mentioned, Jen, they had a meeting this week and three chose to go to full day. So that's the fluctuations in just one conversation. And that's where we are today. I have identified that we, based on our staffing model right now and our max numbers or our most desirable recommended class sizes, we have seats available at each of the grades. We are very watchful over one particular grade and may have to have another conversation about staffing. If we get 25 more students in and no one leaves, then, you know, we're going to be talking about adding staff as well. So we're just watching over it. But at this time, and we're thrilled that we've been able to make that decision on first grade at Peaslee so, so early into the year, because it's right about the time that we were going to say goodbye to some teachers because of, you know, student shifts. So that really saved the day and was excellent timing for some of our staff members because we hate to say goodbye to any teachers who are doing a great job. So that's a, a lot of information, but it's what we've been doing. So that's a lot of information, but it's what we've been doing.
Glad to see that the policy that this committee approved is really helping to create more balance and make some. So that's great. Any other discussion on enrollments?
So you were saying before with the half-day, if it goes down, twelve is your number where you would do a blended model and have them as opposed to a separate class. It's twelve and over, that's going to be one separate class for that.
And the challenge with that is that, and it was, the kindergarten students, for the most part, particularly in the half-day, have never been centered in their neighborhood school. Some of them may be lucky to be centered in their neighborhood school because it was all, last year was at Z School. But if you were a student in the, or if you were in the neighborhood of Proctor, Lincoln, or Peaslee, you weren't in your neighborhood school. And so that's just really how we've run half-day models. And so one of the challenges is going to be that as we move and we continue to monitor the half-day numbers, our full-day classes are filling. So where there might be space today, and if you were to say to me, okay, where are you going to put all the half-day students? It's difficult to say that we're going to be able to put them all in one place because of the numbers, right? And they're fluctuating, you know? We were excited about it now, now we're down to six. So by the time or when we make that decision, where we would have scheduled them today may be very different in August. We want to be patient and we want to make sure that we're giving appropriate time for the parents to make that decision, but we can't wait until the start of school. You know, we need to make some decisions about that and not only about programmatic decisions, but also decisions about placement so parents will know. But we're waiting as long as we can to maximize the opportunity for parents.
Can I just add to that, that in the last ten years, I've been monitoring half-day kindergarten very closely, and every single year for the last ten years, the number has risen.
Right.
Half-day kindergarten has always gone up. I don't know what it is about that.
And we're hopeful that it does again this year. But with, you know, current numbers, it's, we can't have, you know, it's hard to justify a teacher with those numbers.
This might be the year that it doesn't, but I've been watching it closely in ten years. I've seen it only once from my experience. Any other questions or concerns about? All right, Jen, we'll move on to approval of Melikan Middle School's sixth-grade Stone Environmental Trip.
So Mike Grosha and Karen Johnson, the sixth-grade team leaders are going to share with you a bit about our Stone.
Mike Grosha and Karen Johnson, our sixth-grade team leaders are going to share a little bit about our Stone, our annual Stone field trip for sixth graders and ask for your approval to be able to continue the trip next year.
Thank you. So once again, we're here, feels like we do this often. I think it's probably my eighth time.
How many times? Mr. Grosha, how long have you been here for?
I've been here nine years and eight.
Counting when you were a student.
Oh, counting as a student, that's fourteen, no, thirteen. No, so been doing this about eight years, been going to Stone. I've only missed one trip. And it really is a fantastic opportunity, not only for the students to take an opportunity to bond together and form a Melikan identity coming from their elementary schools, but also a chance for them to get to know their teachers a little bit in a different setting outside of the classroom. As you can see, it's up in the White Mountains of New Hampshire at a ski resort, so it's very modern, has indoor plumbing, everything like that. The proposed dates and they're, we've already sent in our down payment, but it's September twenty-fifth to twenty-ninth, so it does come around the corner pretty quickly once we get back to school. The purple team will go the first half of the week, leaving on Monday, again, back on Wednesday, while the orange team would go the second half of the week. They would leave on Wednesday and get there on, come home on Friday. The estimated cost for the trip is about two-hundred-and-seventy dollars per person. With the support of our PTO and the work of Mrs. Carb, we're definitely able to support any student and family who would like to attend the trip but are finding it a little difficult. Our PTO has been wonderful over the years of really doing whatever we ask of them and supporting every single child. That is our main objective, is to get as many kids to go as possible, and they're very supportive in our goal. Obviously, we know that sometimes it's not a great fit for every single family and student, but, you know, our goal is to make sure that it is a opportunity that everyone has a chance to participate in. Sorry about the lighting there. So some of the facts just about the trip, this kind of goes along with safety and making sure our students are well taken care of while they're away from school and away from their families, is that the sixth-grade teachers and the support staff from Melikan attend the trip. It is entirely faculty-supported here, and we have sole responsibility for the students during their rec time, their mealtime, and the nighttime when they're in the dorm. In addition to the Melikan teachers that attend, there are also anywhere between eight and ten to eleven environmental Stone staff members there, and they will take on the responsibility of ushering the kids through their environmental lessons three times a day for about two and a half hours for each lesson. When you, oh, so all the Stone employees are also corey-checked and they're all masters in their field. They have multiple degrees in environmental science. There is a twenty-four-hour nurse on call onsite while we're at Stone as well to make sure that students' medical needs are taken care of as well. When you combine the Melikan staff along with the Stone staff, we have about a five-to-one ratio, so five students to each adult. When it's just the Melikan staff, we're looking at about eight-to-one. So we really do have strong support from the Melikan teachers here to participate in this overnight field trip. For them to leave their families and to leave their classrooms for a few days, they do find it to be a very worthwhile endeavor. While they're at Stone, the students are grouped up into three separate groups. They have their meal group, their field group, and then their dorm group. The field group is the biggest, that's kind of their classroom, that's going to be about ten to twelve students. Their dorm group, each room is a slightly different size, but we could have anywhere between four and ten students per dorm room. And then their meal group, we always have five to six students sitting at a table with at least one adult sitting at that table as well. And like I had said, there are just some students that choose not to attend for whatever reason. When those students do not attend, they would join the other team. So if someone on six-one with the purple team chose not to go, they'd simply join six-six on the orange team and they'd follow their schedule. The one day that both teams are gone, on Wednesday, we have a few teachers that stay back here at Melikan and they put on a nice day for those students, to make them feel special, to give them an opportunity to explore some of the same environmental activities that their peers are doing up in New Hampshire. We have some wonderful ecology trails out back and they usually participate in some sort of activity using technology, getting outside, and giving them their own special day. And Ms. Johnson's going to kind of take over right now to just very briefly highlight what each day is like at Stone.
Okay, so when they first get to Stone, the counselors just take over right away and scoop the kids up while we are handling all the luggage and getting those things into the dorms. So it's a lot of team building initially. They get into their field groups and the counselors go through games and all we hear is the kids just laughing and having fun. And it's just awesome in the beginning of the year that they get to know one another because they're all pooling in from all these elementary schools and they get to just be with different kids. And so they do, let's see, I think the next. Oh, did I go, there's another one. Okay. Well, this is mealtime, so there's three meals a day, breakfast, lunch, and dinner. And during the meals, it's served like family style and the kids are responsible for setting the table. There's setters, there's the ones that have to clean up and get, get more food for the table. So they're taught kind of just those skills of, you know, helping, helping one another out. And they have mealtime lessons, so they graph food waste and do a lot of like environmentally-minded things. So the first day, they, there's a lot of food waste, and then every day, the food waste goes down and down and down, and they talk about composting. And they have skits, you know, where the counselors are putting, performing skits and the kids are laughing. And so mealtimes are like that, all healthy food, but kid-friendly. And then the lessons, they, the kids kind of rotate where they go. They go into the wetlands and they go into the forest, and then they go on a hike. And they learn a lot about, you know, the trees and moss and just the ecology and pond life. And then at night, they have night lessons as well, so they go out on a night hike. It's one of the favorite lessons. And they're not allowed to bring flashlights and they have to let their eyes adjust and they learn all about just so many things. They still talk about it in class now. And there's a bioscope where they learn about the pond life that they collected as well. And I think that's, one more? Oh, yeah, that's, this is coming up. We have Back to Stone Day where this is going to happen on the nineteenth here at Melikan, where we have a day where the teachers have planned and the kids get back into their field groups and they get to revisit some of the team-building activities that they had and we do some fun things around here. It's like a field trip here. So that's it.
You want to say anything?
Sure. So like I said, I think we definitely reached double digits. I'm not a hundred percent sure if it's eleven or twelve years that Melikan has been attending Stone, but I really do feel like it's becoming a tradition and I think it's becoming something that sixth-grade students, incoming sixth-grade students come into Melikan knowing about the Stone trip, and it is something that sticks with them throughout their three years here at Melikan. And, you know, I grew up here in town and went to Algonquin, and I know Southborough's been doing it for a long time as well, and I have some friends from Southborough who can still remember it from back when they attended. So it's definitely a meaningful opportunity and it's, we've found it to be well worth it. So we just hope that you could support it once again.
And just to reiterate, kids, students now are writing their eighth-grade graduation speeches. They're always very thoughtful, but most of them will talk about their Stone trip. So it does stay with them throughout their time here and it is a really nice way for them to get connected early on, and then they are talking about it through eighth grade. So with your permission, we would, we would like to continue this.
Thank you so much. Any discussion or questions from fellow committee members? None, I'll entertain a motion.
I motion that we approve the Melikan Middle School's sixth-grade Stone Environmental Field Trip for September twenty-fifth through twenty-ninth.
Second.
So you first, John. Any other questions? All in favor? Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks for being here tonight. I feel like a break in broken record every year when I say I think it's one of the great things that differentiates Northborough from other towns and communities, that we have this opportunity that's special. So, policy development. We had the two, was it last month that we had discussed these policies? I noticed we mentioned that we approved with the slight changes. I saw the changes made for the, my concern with the year. Clarification on that, thank you. I noticed that, I didn't, I think if they look fine to me, comments or concerns from all the committee members?
No, we approved this, so it's just, it's free by them.
Distribution.
Thank you.
And they'll be up on the website as well, the policies.
Next item on our, on our agenda is audience sharing, opportunity for members of our audience to share. Just a reminder, it's not a public hearing, but we do welcome, invite you to share. Mr. Olson, come on up.
Take him on.
Always a joy to have you here.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Christine again for the hard work that she did to help ratify, work with us to help to ratify the, the Unit C contract. I know it was a lot of meetings, and there was more meetings than we, both of us, I really intended to attend, but I think we really had a, a good rapport. I think it really worked out well for all parties concerned. And thank you to the school committee for your ratification tonight and your votes. These are hardworking people and, and they are, are lucky to be here along with, with your help, so thanks.
Thank you. Just in time for, you got on record in time for superintendent evaluations. Attention committee members. Thank you, Mr. Olson. Audience sharing. Next, anyone? All right, we'll move around. Principals, you welcome?
Um, well, just to thank you again for a couple months ago, you approved the Maker through Staples. We got the Maker Bot and it wasn't even out of the box. We got it about a month ago and it was already being put to use. And our second graders in Mrs. Brunel's class are working with Tinkercad and they designed a terrarium. And all members of the class have a piece that they're designing for that. So this, tomorrow, I'm going in to work with them and see the Maker Bot as it's actually being used with them. So we're going to have that on display probably next week when it's all finished. I just wanted to say thank you to give you an update on how that's being used, and I'm sure going into next year, it's going to be used even more. And I also just wanted to highlight, we had a very moving Memorial Day assembly. Our fourth and our fifth graders just represented the school so beautifully. We were also honored to have our local veterans join us, as well as the Assabett Valley Regional Technical Vocational High School. I think I got that all correct. And their junior ROTC came, and I think just that added so much. And afterwards, the commentary from the students, just how much they enjoyed it and how much they got out of it and their understanding of the purpose of Memorial Day just made the whole event just wonderful. So we just wanted to highlight those two pieces.
Thank you.
And I'd like to mention a few things. This year, we will have Nancy Kalner, our librarian, retiring at the end of the school year after nineteen years at Peaslee School. She has made an incredible mark on Peaslee and is leaving a rather large pair of shoes to fill. So we wish her well, but certainly will have some adjusting to do after she goes. I also wanted to mention that last week, we were able to get our fund run in. The PTO and I worked together to do a fund run, which the children all participate in. They walk or run on a course outside on the Peaslee School grounds, and they raised funds this year to add another piece of equipment in the one open spot that we have on our play structure area. So we are going to be getting a try-trotter, which the PTO was just in the process of ordering for us. Since last we met, we have enjoyed a number of activities, including the All-Town Band Concert. That was absolutely incredible with, when our fifth-grade students join the Melikan Middle School Band and they play, and it was just amazing. We also had our own band and chorus concert at Peaslee. We had our Grade Five Colonial Travel Fair, so if you were ever interested in taking a trip to the colonies, you were able to find out a lot of information about what, what each colony had to offer you as far as jobs and climate and things to do, however, in the very early years of this country. We had our kindergarten information night last week, which was very nicely attended. And this morning, we welcomed incoming students to the Pimpin' Nickel Puppet Show, which has become an annual tradition at Peaslee School. We also had our fourth-grade science museum last week. It was amazing as always, three classrooms full of student work and student projects, and it was just incredible. And people just couldn't get enough of seeing what the children had produced during the course of the year in their science classes. Grade four is currently practicing for the annual Grade Four Play, which is a highlight for the end of the year for us. Grade four is currently practicing for the annual grade four play, which is a highlight for the end of the year for us. Grade three is practicing for their biography fair and just an update, you had approved a grant from Pacific Life Foundation for us and we have Dash Robots on order. That's what we ended up deciding to use those funds for. So very excitedly anticipating their arrival. So thank you for approving that.
Excellent. Boy, you have a lot going on over there at Peaslee.
We do. Like to stay busy.
Excellent. We had similar sorts of things with our band and chorus concert and all-town band, but I do also want to highlight the retirement of Eileen Bursey, who is our cafeteria manager. Eileen's been with us for 19 years. She helped open our cafeteria, not as the manager, but as one of the workers. So she will be sorely missed in our kitchen, by the students and the staff. She's been a mainstay at the Z School, so we will wish her well on her travels to Tennessee, I believe is where she's going to set up camp. So we're happy for her. Similarly, we had our World Day of Cultures on the 25th of May and we are so grateful to Jen Suker, who is the ELD teacher at Algonquin. She worked with five of her students to prepare presentations on their cultures. So we had a presentation from one student who was from the Congo, two other students who were from Guatemala, a student from Israel, a student from Brazil. So the students came and presented about their cultures. They shared language, favorite foods, customs, sports, and so forth. It was very well received and we're looking forward to expanding that for next year. The afternoon wound up being a dance program. I believe Mr. LaBelle is familiar with that dance program. We had three different programs going on, one which was led by one of our students who takes Bollywood lap dance. So she gathered a group of her friends and taught them some of her cultural dance. We actually had a father and grandfather from Ireland who taught almost half of our fifth graders sort of Irish version of square dance. And then we had some guest performers, former students and current students who came in to do some Irish step dance. So it was a great day of just looking at how other people celebrate and live around the globe. We will be looking forward to expanding that for next year. Our fifth grade students, their tradition the end of the year is to go to the Great East Music Festival, which they did last Friday, the second. Alan Phelps leads the chorus and Rebecca McCarrick leads the band and they came home with two gold medals. So that was really exciting for them. It was great. Say what you will about social media, but Twitter kept us all in touch over the course of the day. We actually had a video clip that somebody had posted with the band students singing their parts, which was just a really interesting phenomenon for me. So, so we're getting ready for that already for next year. Tomorrow, our fifth graders will be graduating from their DARE program. We thank our school resource officer, Michael Bisset, for his guidance there. On next Monday, if you're looking for a real wonderful theatrical performance, our fifth graders are putting on The Keeping Room, which is set in colonial times. But it is set to music that's current day, but they've changed the lyrics. So it should be pretty entertaining. Been fun listening to them rehearse. And then on the 21st, if you're looking for some travel ideas, the fourth grade will be holding their state fair. So that will be, take place at about nine o'clock in the morning. And finally, I do want to thank our fifth graders. Each year they leave a gift for us of some sorts. This year they are, parents are coming in this weekend and are building a Gaga pit, which is an Israeli form of dodgeball. So that will be constructed by the playgrounds to add another element out there. Students couldn't be more thrilled with the idea of leaving this behind. Very enthusiastic about this game and they're glad to be leaving their mark with us. God, it's Z too. Thank you.
Okay. So some of the same common things amongst all four elementary schools. So I'll just highlight three things that we recently held at Lincoln Street. So moving backwards in time, today we held a vocabulary parade, which I think it's the third time that we've held this event. We, we highlight vocabulary words a day, a word a day throughout the school year and we culminate that in a celebration of the students reading a book called Miscellaneous, I think in the Vocabulary Disaster. And Liz Matthews, our reading specialist, dresses in a crown and a robe and she serves as miscellaneous and she leads the entire school in a vocabulary parade. Each student chooses a word and they dress with a hat, kind of highlighting the word that they've chosen and a sign highlighting the word as well. So we've, we've had a lot of different words celebrated at Lincoln Street and families were able to come and watch us today. So we were appreciative of the weather holding out for us finally for that. Last Friday, we held our annual field day and I wanted to, oh, and back to the vocabulary parade, I did want to compliment Michelle Volcano and Lee King, a fourth grade teacher and our librarian, because they really spearhead that project each year. Our field day, led by Trish Rollins and dozens of parent volunteers, was held last Friday and I've been to many school field days in my time, but Peter, you can probably attest to this, Trish really goes above and beyond. Each year we have a different theme. No station is ever the same from year to year. This year, the, the theme was superheroes and, you know, when you walk into the gym early in the morning and you see the entire outside of your school has been transformed. Plus, the gym has three technology stations because she is superimposing Spider-Man jumping up and down on a climbing wall and the kids are, one of the activities is the kids climbing and catching Superman. It's, it's really extraordinary, the amount of work and effort that goes into making a great day for our students and our classroom teachers follow their students around diligently from nine in the morning until about one in the afternoon. It's a long day. And with the help of the PTO, we also brought in a, I don't know, a world renowned female basketball player who can dribble six balls at once and balance on a surfboard thing while ball's in the air and it was, it was a great end to a really nice day. So it was a great day for our students to celebrate fitness and wellness and just some fun. And I had mentioned at the last meeting that we had a multicultural week coming up, which was a new event for Lincoln Street School. Again, under the guidance of Sandy Bunzick, our ELL teacher, and Suzanne Stimson, one of our aides. And the, the week was just so amazing and so representative of the diverse cultures that we have at Lincoln Street with a parent coming in and teaching the students how to write in Japanese and how to complete origami art projects, to morning announcements that were videotaped each day with students and parents talking in a native language and in English, wishing us well for the day and highlighting their country of origin. And really the culminating event was an evening multicultural event where students created booths from either their country of origin or a country that had great significance to them. And food was highlighted from the countries. Our projects were highlighted. We had staff members who made booths. We had students who made booths. We had large clusters of families who got together. We had a whole Indian station, a China station. It was, there were just so many cultures and there was so much pride. We had bagpipe players in traditional garb. It, it was just really a great night and there was a lot of pride evident in the building and it was probably one of the most heavily attended events that I've seen, both with staff and students. So I really want to compliment our staff and our, our families for making that such a great experience. We probably have the most significant number of retirements at Lincoln Street that I've seen. It's a small number, but it, it feels like a significant group. We have two longstanding first grade teachers who are both retiring this year, Jean Fraser and Allison Thomas. And I, I didn't bring the exact number of years, but clearly it's in the dozens of years, how, how many times they've gotten up and served. There are 180 days on behalf of students and families in Northborough. And, you know, I can certainly go on about both of them, but I think the highlight of both of those teachers is their commitment to students and their commitment to social and emotional learning and making sure that their learning environments were safe and nurturing places for students. And when you think about our youngest students, that's what you think about in a first grade classroom. You want it to be safe and those first learning experiences when they're just learning how to read. Those are two women who have devoted their lives to the students of Northborough and they will certainly be sorely missed as, you know, the people that all of you mentioned. And I guess our food service director will have his work cut out for him because our kitchen manager is also retiring at the end of the year. Mrs. Foraker just announced that she will be retiring and she has also been a, just a steadfast supporter of our school lunch program at Lincoln Street. And she is moving on also to enjoy the rest of her time and not have to come and serve lunch every day. So anyway, that will be a big loss in, in our kitchen staff as well.
I feel like most of tonight was about Mellican, so I won't take very much time, but we are also in the middle of our concert series. We had a, a really, the best choral concert I've been to in my 20 years here. It was amazing last night. Tomorrow night is our sixth grade band and chorus concert and then next Tuesday, we have our eighth grade musical concert instrumental. So Kate Getchel, Brent Ferguson, Dave Dackel, and Rebecca McCarrick really do wonders with these kids and they're happy and they're excited and it's very inclusive. There's so many different kinds of kids that participate in these programs. There are hundreds of kids at these events that are participating in different ways and it's just, it's a, I think my principal colleagues will attest, you just get chills sometimes. They're so good and just to see them all working together and happy. It's just awesome. So we are very thankful for Algonquin for letting us use their auditorium because we don't have a place large enough to hold the crowd that comes. So it's, it's a great time of year. It's exciting. And I also want to acknowledge our three retirees, Janet Scapetto, who's been in the district for 18 years as our speech language pathologist, Nancy Pajani, math teacher for 20 years, and Elise Bradley, Spanish teacher for 20 years.
Thank you. Committee members?
That's pretty hard to follow all that. But if anyone thinks June is a slow month and things are winding down, I think we just absolutely stated emphatically, that's not the case. And I think it's an appropriate time to just say thank you to everyone across the table, in our classrooms, somewhere in our school, doing what they do best, to our school communities, to our counterparts, wherever they may be, across the district. And really the support of NEF, the parent organizations, the folks at Central Office, everyone seated around the table for making this year another tremendous, successful year for our students. If anyone wonders why people want to move to the town of Northborough, there are five outstanding reasons right there. Representatives of five schools that make up an incredible educational experience for our students. So I just wanted to give a quick shout out to our, all of our staff, our faculty, our central office, the parent community. Those support us in spirit and in many, many varied ways each and every day. And to, again, the full support of the Northborough School Committee and the town of Northborough for believing and continuing to believe how important public education is to not only to the community, but to the future of our students and the future of our community. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you to you, to all that you do. Anyone else? Do I close this section any time? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for sharing. Well, this next item is personal items, the distribution of personnel report. Much of it was discussed. Yep, it was in the packet and also discussed and somewhat non-sharing. Communications, distribution of school newsletters. The thank you letter from Peaslee School, that was very nice of the students to recognize to respond to us. That was very nice. Appreciate that. Please let them. Future agenda items. I know we've already mentioned liaison. Simon will be on the next agenda. Oh, but that's for our next Northborough School Committee. Northborough, other Northborough items?
We have a Northborough item because we have a summer meeting for subcommittee who probably have some policies. So we put that in as a placeholder. We'll probably have Apple Fest.
Apple Fest, back to school newsletter. We're actually going a little crazy with our back to school newsletter this year. We're trying to have streaming video of our principals instead of hard copies to make it more easy, easily updated. Yes, congratulations, you're going to go live.
I'm seeing some head shaking. Is this approved or?
And instead of, you know, having a hard copy that is paper rich, we're with our new website, going to launch a more virtual, online, live newsletter. So we're very excited. Stay tuned. Now we've tweaked an interest.
So you're going to have to have a screen behind you with like all sorts of scenes.
Lot of opportunities there, Michelle. So to this, to the community, the time has come to move into the 21st century with the newsletter. And so that will be available online and we'll be certain at sending out a communication to the community telling them how they can access this. We'll have hard copies, of course, for those who are able to access it in any way using technology, but we're going to give it a try and see how, how it works. So that will be an update.
That will be great. Yes, it is. Any other items? And feel free to contact me if you have an, an item you wish to have added to the agenda.
The only other thing over the summer is that as we get closer to that August 4th, if we could just keep the committee informed as far as what the enrollments are, what kind of the final, the final as of August 4th, what those numbers look like.
Absolutely. I'm sure there will be many updates. And all that is back to school is usually part of the agenda.
Okay, approval of bills and payrolls.
Cheryl has a stack.
I do. Great. Any other business which may legally come before the committee? Second, my Susan. All in favor?